Call to order, the August 15, 2018, meeting of the Frederick County Planning Commission. It's time if you all would join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Our first item on our agenda tonight is the adoption of our agenda. I could have a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Next item we have is our June 6, 2018 minutes and our June 20, 2018, meeting minutes. If we have read those, there's no changes to those minutes. I'll adopt a motion to adopt those.
Move for adoption of both minutes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is our committee reports, and our first one is our Transportation Committee. Commissioner Oats.
Yes, sir. We met on Monday, July 23. Had three items on the agenda. The first was a request by a citizen to look at placing a truck restriction on Hayfield Road. There wasn't much data available that would support a truck restriction. Ultimately, the committee decided to wait until VDOT had offered up some more information at our next meeting before making a determination on that. Second item was a breakdown of our transportation form that was held down in Stralsburg about I-81, basically just a rundown of what occurred. And then the third item was an update on the county projects. Right now, the Teva Street Bridge and the Y at the Randabout, there was a kickoff meeting with VDOT on July 12. For the northern Y, that design is going to 30 percent. Staff will take a look at it when it reaches that point. There's some meetings that need to take place with some of the adjacent landowners to change interesters around. The second one was Renaissance Drive. Again, that was a kickoff meeting to take that project to 30 percent and analyze the cost and completion dates. That 30 percent estimate is expected to be in by October. And then the final one was back to the Teva Street Bridge. The designers received 100 percent of the comments, and staff is meeting with VDOT to address those comments, and bid package items are being compiled. And currently, the right-of-way plats should have been completed by now and will be going out.
Thanks, sir. Before I move on to liaison reports, I don't want to miss anyone. Is there any other committee reports? Okay, thank you. Next one would be Winchester Planning Commission Liaison. Ms. Eaton.
Thank you. We had our August 7 work session meeting, which included a review of the following in preparation for the upcoming public hearing to be held August 21 at 3:00 p.m. We had two business items. One was a privately initiated request pertaining to primary and secondary Old Town Assessment districts. Currently, applications for outdoor dining areas are limited to restaurants that are licensed through the Virginia Department of Health. This request is to amend Winchester zoning ordinance 18-7 to extend allowances for outdoor seating areas to the following businesses: microbreweries, nanobreweries, micro-distilleries, and wineries. If this amendment is approved, a qualified business would need to secure the same type of zoning permit for outdoor seating as restaurants. The second business item is a request for a conditional use permit by Chantel for a new telecommunications facility intending to locate at the southwest end of the BMX track in Jim Barnett Park at 1,001 East Cork Street, zoned education institution and public use, EIP. The proposed facility would include creating a fence compound with dimensions up to 40 foot by 40 foot for the containment of ground equipment and 100-foot monopole tower intended to accommodate increased demands for wireless services. The last item is for a work group. A bylaw subcommittee was created at our Planning Commission's annual retreat in June to provide updates to the existing bylaws. And committee members will present a draft version of the commission's, at the commission's next work session, the end of this month. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Our counterparts in the city have been busy. Our next liaison report is from our Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Trout.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. So the supervisors met August 8 at 7:00 p.m., and major thing, we made an amendment to our 2018-19 fiscal year budget to have an additional supplemental appropriation for $45.5 million for the acquisition of land, design, and construction of a replacement Ailer Middle School. We also approved a rezoning 01-18 for Stonewall, Stonewall 4, which basically took 88.91 acres in a rural district to M1 light industrial with proffers. Then there was an ordinance amendment we considered about shipping containers, and it was sent back to staff for additional discussion. This was an amendment because the current ordinance does not specifically say shipping containers. It only talks about parked tractor-trailers. And then there was an ordinance amendment about storage facilities self-service in the RA district, and that died during our meeting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Our next item on our agenda moving forward is Citizen Comment portion. This is our portion where any citizens can speak on any matter that's not on our agenda tonight. So if anyone has anything they'd like to bring before us as a commission, now is the time to do that. Seeing no one, I'll close the Citizen Comment portion tonight. Our first item on our agenda is a public hearing, and it's rezoning of number 2-18 for St. Paul on the Hill, submitted by Greenway Engineering, to rezone 4.971 plus or minus acres from the RP Residential Performance District to the RP Residential Performance with proffers. This property is located at 1527 Cinsiny Road in the Red Bud Magisterell District and is identified by property identification number 54-A-128. Ms. Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. As you stated, this is a request to rezone 4.9 acres from the RP Residential Performance District to the RP District with proffers. Now, the property is currently located within the sewer water service area as well as the urban development area, and it's currently designated in the Cinsiny Eastern Frederick Urban Area Plan for institutional land uses. Now, just as a side note, while the current designation of the institutional isn't consistent with the land use plan, the applicant is also seeking a comprehensive plan amendment request and to change that designation from institutional to urban center, and that application will follow this one we're discussing now. I can direct you to the screen on your left. Subject property is outlined here. For reference, you have Cinsiny Row that runs across the frontage. With this rezoning, the applicant has proffered that development on the property shall be limited to a church and to housing for older persons, and that 100 percent of the housing units, each unit shall be rented or sold such that at least one resident in each unit is a person of at least 55 years or older. Now, as I stated, the agenda item after this item will follow. It's the comprehensive plan amendment. This rezoning request seeks to address the Planning Commission's concern of restricting the land use on the property to housing for older persons. That was discussed with the comprehensive plan back at your June 6 meeting. So with that, staff is seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission to forward to the board on this rezoning request. I'd be glad to answer any questions, and Mr. Evan Wyatt is here on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Perkins? Thank you. Mr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Evan Wyatt of Greenway Engineering. We've had an opportunity on several occasions to discuss the project, so I'm not going to go back through that. At your last meeting, the concern we heard was that to try to control the land use through a private covenant was something that gave the county pause. So as a response to that, we're before you this evening with a proffer that accomplishes that. So hopefully, this will satisfy you, and if there's any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Mr. Wyatt?
Thank you. Thank you.
This is a public hearing, and this time I'll open a public hearing for anyone to like to come forward to speak to this matter. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, discussion?
I'm supportive of it. They've come back with what we asked for, and makes it a very clean project now.
Any others?
Mr. Chairman, I agree with that, and certainly, if anybody else has any comments, that'd be great, but do you think that this satisfies the concerns that were raised previously? And so I'd like to recommend that the Planning Commission recommend approval of rezoning application number 02-18 for St. Paul's on the Hill.
Have a second?
Second.
Time to vote. Mr. Moan?
Moan, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Triplet, yes.
Willmont, yes.
Oats, yes.
Klein, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Marston, yes.
Unger, yes.
And a chair votes yes. This motion is, this is approved. It'll go on to the Board of Supervisors for their September 12 meeting. Our next item on the agenda is a non-public hearing action item, and it's CPPA number 101-18, St. Paul on the Hill, land use designation amendment request. Due to my throat concerns, I'll let you take it from here.
Again, thank you. This is a requested amendment to the Cinsiny Eastern Frederick Urban Area Plan for 4.9 acres zoned RP located in the sewer water service and the urban development area. Now, at your June 6 meeting, this comp plan amendment was tabled, postponed for 45 days to allow the applicant the time to work through the use, which they did with the previous application. So the current land use plan shows institutional. They are seeking to change that to an urban center. The site is surrounded by both institutional, residential, and the Greenwood urban center. This is a snippet from the Frederick Eastern Plan. You see the subject property here, and it is currently shown with institutional. You have residential, which is that yellow hatching reflective of the adjacent residential, and then you have the urban center adjacent to the property. And this is what they are seeking. They're seeking to expand that urban center designation from where it ends right here to encompass that subject property. So the state of the subject property is zoned RP. I'm just going to go over a little bit the density that would be increased with the urban center designation. Currently, at 10 units an acre, the max would be 49 units. With the urban center designation, that does double the density, so that would potentially go up to 99 units. As the state of the Planning Commission held a public hearing on June 6, so this is an action item, not a public hearing item, as you stated. So we are seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission to forward to the board. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to speak?
Thank you once again, Mr. Chairman. Just very briefly, to remind everybody, the purpose of the comprehensive plan amendment request is to allow the property, which is already zoned residential, to be able to develop a multifamily structure, which is needed for the population that Wesley House and St. Paul's plan to serve.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wyatt?
Thank you. Thank you.
Any discussion, response?
Mr. Chairman, unless there's other discussion, I would move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of CPPA number 01-18 for St. Paul's on the Hill.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second. Start, and we'll vote. Mr. Oats? I mean, excuse me. I'm sorry, I'm looking at something. Mr. Unger?
Unger, yes.
Marston, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Klein, yes.
Oats, yes.
Willmont, yes.
Triplet, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Moan, yes.
The chair votes yes. Just like keep everybody on their toes here. Thank you. That goes, that item also goes to the Board of Supervisors on our September 12, our September 12 meeting. Our next item on our agenda is a conditional use permit, number 13-96, Hawk Creek Country Market for Winchester 101 LLC revocation. This conditional use permit is proposed to be revoked. I think we'll go back now. This conditional use permit is proposed to be revoked due to violations of conditions four and seven from conditional use permit number 13-96, which pertains to the buffers, lighting pollution, noise, debris, and hours of operation. This property is located at 4780 Northwestern Pike, Winchester, Virginia, and is identified with property identification number 40-A-66D in the Gainsborough Magisterell District in the RA Roy Arizona Zoning District. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, as you pointed out, the Board of Supervisors at the 25th July meeting directed that this conditional use permit 1396 be scheduled for potential revocation. The conditional use permit 1396 was approved on December 11, 1996 for a country general store. The conditions placed upon that conditional use permit at the time was a site plan shall be submitted and approved for the proposed addition prior to any construction activity. Number two, any future expansion of the facility or change of use would require a new conditional use permit. Number three, all review agency comments and requirements shall be applied at all times. Number four, at the time of the site plan submitted, a buffer shall be constructed along the property line adjoining residents, which would reduce the light pollution, stop pollution, and be able to catch blowing debris. Number five, if an internal speaker was to be used for the drive in window, the volume of the must be controlled so that it would not be a nuisance to adjoining residents. Number six, required screening on the east side of the store site may be the low screen that would capture any blowing paper debris that escaped from the market site. And number four, the permitted hours of operations in market would be from 5:00 a.m. to midnight. Real quick, here's, to your left is the, I think we're all familiar with the site on Route 50, where Hawk Creek Market is. There was a site plan that was submitted, and that was part of the violations that were brought to light at this body and also at the Board of Supervisors. In your agenda package, it does show it approved site plan, or it had been, excuse me, that was approved in 1996 with the, at the time that it was approved, it had a canopy with gas pumps there. There was screening, and there was a fence that was, a board fence put up on each side of the property. Since that time, staff received complaint regarding the hours of operations of this country store. The property owner was cited for that violation at 2018, April 2, for violating condition number seven, the hours of operation. The property owner applied to amend condition number seven, the change of hours of operation to 24 hours. And again, as I pointed out, that was brought up at this body, and the other body was that there were additional violations at this site. Again, the Planning Commission recommended to deny the revision of the 24 hours. And then, of course, it went to the Board of Supervisors, and they also denied that for the hours of operation. The violations identified have been addressed by the applicant, including the hours of operation, screening, trash, and lighting. The following public hearing, staff is seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission forward to the Board of Supervisors on this revocation of conditional use permit 1396. For the record, Mr. Clifford Hampshire is representing the applicant. He's here tonight. I'll answer any questions. Mr. Chairman, you or any of the commissioners may have on this revocation of conditional use permit 1396. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Questions? Mr. Oats.
Mr. Chairman, is the site currently adhering to the site plan and the conditional use permit?
As of the 10th of August, yes, the last time I was up there, sir. Yes, sir.
And in the ordinance, it says there's three conditions, assuming not all had to be met, but three conditions for revocation. One is for you to establish or discontinue your conditional use for more than two years, and this one doesn't meet that standard. The other is repeated or continued violation to this chapter on the conditions. The current owner, is this the first violation that he's had?
Actually, no. Staff has been, had been up there prior with the owner as to a site plan, and that had to do with the, on the eastern side of the property, the fencing, and the plantings were turned out and now repaired.
So the current owner's had two violations?
He's been cited for one, but there was a second violation that staff worked through with the present owner with.
So one cited and one taken care of. Then the other was fraudulent or falsely misleading information supplied by the applicant. Was that a case?
No, sir.
So at best, we're looking at B, continued violations, as few enough to move this forward.
Hey, that's what we're looking at, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's good stuff.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. Since our meeting, I have seen some action taken by the owner to correct some of the things that we discussed.
You're aware of that?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir. Advocate like to speak?
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Gifford Hampshire. I'm with the law firm of Blankenship and Keith, and I represent Winchester 101, the landowner of this property. It's a pleasure to be before you. I am joined here tonight with the representative of Winchester 101, Mr. Prakash Patel, and also my colleague, Tim Purnell. And again, we're happy to be in front of you today. We want to emphasize, as Mr. Sharon said, that we have worked diligently to resolve not only the citation of excess hours or being open past the hours allowed under the permit, but also the other complaints that we have been, we have received. And I'd like to note that we've done that both before and after our application for amendment to the CUP and even continuing after July 25, when the Board of Supervisors denied our application to amend the CUP. Here, for example, we have a fence that was required under the site plan. It has been repaired, and landscaping has been installed on the outside of that fence. You'll see some flags there on the outside of the trees, and I'd just like to emphasize, those are survey flags. We had to go, we had to go to the expense because we thought it was the right thing to do, to make sure after all these years, we knew where the property line was, so we didn't put this landscaping on somebody else's property. And so you see there the survey flags, you see the landscaping, which is guaranteed replacement, and you will see also from these shots, the repair in the fence. You can see down there the new section of the fence. You also see here a sign. You can't read that sign, but one of the complaints that we received was overnight parking of trucks. Those trucks were parking, and we have taken action with these signs, and also importantly, the enforcement of these signs to prevent people from parking in the parking lot overnight. What drivers were doing apparently was driving and detaching their trailers from their tractors and leaving the trailers, which we admit was not right, and we've taken care of that problem. Here's another shot, another, a better shot of the sign. This is the back of the property, which you can see has been cleared of any parking, another no parking sign. The other complaint that we've received a lot of, and this is heard both before you, I believe, and also the Board of Supervisors, was the canopy lighting. Now, keep in mind, when you look at the conditions of the special use permit, there's nothing per se about the canopy lighting, except that there shall be erected a screen on the property to prevent excessive canopy lighting, and the fence was installed pursuant to the site plan, and it's been there all these years. Now, nevertheless, we are sensitive to the neighbors' complaints, and we have installed new canopy lighting, which is shielded to keep that light from flowing onto adjoining properties. There is an example, there's a close-up of that light, and you can see that shield, how it works to prevent the excessive lighting. There's another shot of that. Here's a shot of the front of the property, looking out on the roadway. So I'd like to emphasize again that we have done a lot to address the neighbor complaints in addition to, importantly, redoubling our efforts to make sure that we're closed by midnight. And that means we've established a protocol to start shutting down at 11:45 p.m. to make sure that we have to do whatever we need to do. We service the last customers, and we can shut off all the lights in that 15 minutes and not, not have any more problems. I do take a little issue with what Mr. Sharon said. The record before the Board of Supervisors, and I looked at the video, is clear that the only citation, the only real violation we have is the excessive hours. Notwithstanding our sensitivity to these other issues, the excessive hours is the citation that's attached to your package, it's attached to my letters. We contend, and we argue, that that one complaint, excuse me, that one citation, that one violation, because after all, there is a difference between a violation and a complaint about a violation. A violation is something where staff has gone out, established a violation, and issued a violation, and it hasn't been taken care of. I suggest to you that that provision within your zoning ordinance is for the purpose of a landowner who repeatedly ignores violations. The county cites him, they ignore it. The county cites him, they ignore it. The county cites him, they ignore it, and they don't do anything about it. Here, we have the opposite. We have a single violation, and we have not only these efforts to abate that violation, but we have an application to amend the conditional use permit to legalize the activity what was complained about. Now, that was not successful. We admit that. It wasn't successful. But it was a good faith effort to legalize that activity. There was a suggestion at the Board of Supervisors hearing, there was something nefarious or unfair about that. That's not the case at all. If you looked at the tape from that hearing on July 25, you will hear Mr. Sharon saying that out of the five complaints that in the history, of the remembered history of Winchester County where there have been violations, only one permit was revoked, and in that one case, that was the only case where there was not an application to amend the permit or take some other action to abate the violation. I suggest to you that we are the normal, usual case where we have acted quickly to abate the violation and at least attempted to legalize the conduct through an amendment of the permit. That effort was not successful, and we are continuing to comply with the hour requirement, as I stated a little bit earlier. I ask you also to recognize, in the words of one of your citizens who was reported in the Winchester Star, "I'm all for following the rules, but I see nothing wrong with this business owner seeking, asking to amend them either. If there's enough business to justify 24-hour opening, and there appears to be with sheets and others in this industry, why is it so offensive that they are asking to amend the CUP? What would be offensive is if the board really entertains revoking the current CUP altogether. This business serves many residents of Frederick County and the many workers traveling to Frederick County from West Virginia." And I ask you to recognize also in this context that in that light, this establishment serves an important function for the residents of Frederick County. Also, comments from the Winchester Star, "I just moved not too far from the gas station and enjoy the easy access for fueling up my vehicles. That store has like five neighbors. The store is doing way more good to Frederick County taxpayers than it is to annoy those neighbors. I live up off 259, and if I need something in the middle of the night, I have to go all the way to Winchester." And a similar comment. And finally, at this hearing before on June 6, it was reported that Vicki Prey, the Business General Manager, countered that operating 24 hours a day would be a convenience for customers and improved safety on a dark stretch of road. A lot of truth in that quote, according to one reader. So my point being, there's nothing nefarious or unfair about us seeking to amend the permit. Indeed, that is the common and unusual practice, and if it's not successful, we live within the terms of the permit, which we are doing, and we abate any complaints, which we are doing. For the record, I need to close simply by saying, from a legal point of view, as I did in my paper, that the revocation is unfounded because it is based on a single violation, a single cited violation of code, which is insufficient under subsection B that was discussed earlier. But I hasten to add- But I hasten to add that we are a good neighbor, we provide a good service to the county, and we want to continue to do so. And finally, my client asked me to say to the commission and to anybody else listening that if there's ever any complaint in the future, please don't harbor those complaints. Come to us. We have reached out to the neighbors, and we have addressed every single complaint that's been made to us through the efforts that I've pointed out to you, and we will continue to do so in the future. We have an interest in being a good neighbor because our neighbors are our customers. And I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This time, I'll open the public hearing. If anybody wanted to come forward to speak, now's the time to do so. We'll ask you to be cognizant of our time constraints. We'll do try to stay as close as we can to three minutes. If you would adhere to that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is Robin Menefee, and I'm the adjacent property owner. I find it very difficult to be a citizen in the CUP process. I asked twice if I could previously do slides, and I was told no. I can't set up a business case in just a couple minutes. We've got a long history. I've been 18 months reporting that there was violations to the hours. The citizens trusted what was going on. They never knew that it was a violation to report it. They just lived with the noise at night. I spent the last six months trying to get, reporting again what was happening with the border and everything else. You've seen the pictures. Since I wasn't able to, I printed out what I could, the email didn't get out to you. And it was disgraceful how long that fence was broken down. I even wondered if the owner even came out and saw his own property. And the trash, and that my husband had to spend four hours cleaning up trash that was not from Route 50, as what was reported before, but came from the store because of the huge sections missing and the trash that was never picked up on their side. I have spent one-third of my vacation this year trying to address these issues. April 2nd, a letter came out and went to three different addresses. We had the hearing, they heard your all's words and questions, and one of the things that was said, and I apologize for being so upset, I'm just kind of passionate at the moment. One of the things that was said was about the trucks at night being fuel trucks. Well, the trucks I've seen at night were not fuel trucks. They were customers coming in. And after the April 2nd hearing and hearing your all's words and questions, the store continued to operate within that 12 to 5. And I'm not talking about the customer that showed up at five minutes of and they left at five minutes after. I'm talking about when there were no customers. And I even went in there at 25 minutes after in May and bought something. And so it's very difficult to hear that there were no violations and that there haven't been complaints. And then to always have, so what's, yes, we are not advocating that this gets shut down, but we, when we came before this board and the Board of Supervisors, this was to be a country store with a drive-through restaurant. We have a major gas station. We have 400,000 gallons of fuel beside us. We are in a residential area. Tractor trailers traverse around the property Monday morning when there was three semi-trucks, semi-trailers on the property. This is not what we ever thought. We're not complaining from a standpoint of just arbitrary complaints. The CUP system requires that, or not requires, but the only way there's any reporting is if the citizens do it. So the county has us in this position. So some of you may think we're complaining, some of the citizens listening. But when you go home, see how you would feel if your neighbor is doing things that infringe on your property. This is a permitted right. It's not a permitted use. So it's very difficult that when you have that big of a business, and the reason I was sharing that is the conditions matter. So when the conditions were originally set for something small, and now you have something big, those conditions matter. And I feel that if they were so neighborly, why didn't they fix that fence? Why did it not get fixed in the middle of July? That fence only represents respect to us. If you look at those pictures, it doesn't stop any light. It picks up the trash from hitting the bottom of the property. So they were minor. They were things that were within the control, the hours within their control. Fixing a fence is common business sense. Picking up your trash is common business sense. So...
Mr. Menefee, if you could be working towards the end?
We advocate and we ask that the board, or the commission, a two-part recommendation of the Board of Supervisors, revoke the CUP due to continuous violations, and at the same time recommend an adoption of a new CUP, which holds the intent of the agreement, should the property owners be willing to accept it. We need conditions. We don't have them. All we have are the ones that are in there. And we ask that the county look at the fact that citizens matter. The use impacts us. There's been a lot of notice out there. There was a Hail Mary pass at the end, and I personally don't find that acceptable. That's not a system with integrity to me. And I thank you for listening to me, and I thank you for letting me be passionate.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward, please? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Tanya Elliott. I've worked at the gas mart almost three years. And now I have to walk in, in the morning, in the dark. I have to be afraid of what I might see. And as far as I know, they have done everything they can do to comply with what you all want and what the neighbors want. They are trying to work with everyone. I don't know why everyone else can't try to work together with them. They have been very good to me, better than any place I have worked before. And I think you should consider that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No apology necessary. Take your time.
All right.
State your name, please, and where you live.
James Booker. I used to live at, on their property, the Menefee Properties, for the past eight years. Lights never bothered us because we had a corner bedroom, and you put blinds up, lights are gone. The noise, you're going to hear noise because it's a highway. So, and the trash, Gaithers got trash, too, that blows into the neighbor's yard. The neighbors pick it up. They don't complain about it. I picked up the trash for the past eight years. They pay me for picking it up, and it didn't take me no four hours to pick up the trash. So I know we should come off in four hours, but I'm handicapped, and I walk slow, so...
All righty.
All right.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? I got a gentleman behind you first, came up.
Chairman, board, thank you for listening to us this evening.
State your name, please.
As far as the...
State your name and where you live.
My name's Ever Menefee. I'm an adjoining neighbor of the property. My wife spoke earlier. She says 400,000 gallons of fuel, which is wrong. It's only 65,000 gallons of fuel there, but still considerable compared to most other businesses. Yes, it did take four hours to clean up the trash. The yard was full of trash. The trees were full of trash. And I was actually asked by the tenant's mother, the main tenant of the property, to come and clean up the trash while they were gone because she was embarrassed with having her company there to visit her from Florida or North Carolina. Also, what brought our attention to file the complaint was a year and a half ago. She also complained about the noise coming in the house and making it difficult to get her rest at night. So that's what brought our attention to this matter. I think that we've been good neighbors, to be honest with you. I've been over there three times, two on trash, one on buffer over the years, and I was ignored every time. After three times and being ignored, you do not go back. I should have filed a complaint then, but I didn't. Now we're trying to put Pandora back in its box and get this business running the way it should be, where it doesn't impact the community. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else?
My name is Ray Heiner. I'm one of the consumers that regularly go there. And it's been just building a relationship with these people over the years. Their integrity is great. They would do anything to try to help people as far as my personal relationship with them. So as one of the consumers, it's been nice getting in and out of that facility because it's huge. Being a truck driver, getting in and out of there is key a lot of times. So now, you know, it's hard to find other places to go that provide the services that they provide. But as far as the trash or anything like that, I can't comment. But I do know that the integrity of the owners of this business is great. You know, they're willing to do whatever they can to make people happier there.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Yes, my name is Alan Marson from Gainesboro District. I am here on the behalf of Charles and Brendan Newcomb from Back Creek District, who live directly opposite the store. They are not able to be here tonight due to a family medical issue. I'm kind of composing what she wrote to what sounds right for me to be saying it, but would first like to thank them for the replacement of the lights, using the can lights with the downer aim. They've made a tremendous difference. No more light shining in the living room or bedroom windows at night. So that's much appreciated. Also, they realize that they can't help if people entering and leaving the store spin tires, race motorcycles, and things like that. That's their road. But the problem starts coming with the addition of many trucks for the fueling, the jake braking late at night as they slow down to enter into their premises. They do not want a truck stop in a site designated for a country store. And this is where the real problem, and this is a residential district, and it has grown They sit on their porch, they watch their trucks roll in and out, and the amount has grown, especially during the day. And the fact that this is a regular business, a successful business, is not the problem, but they are definitely opposed to opening this for 24 hours. They are now under the conditional use permit designated in 19 of the 24, and that is enough. And they respectfully request that the hours do not be extended beyond those originally listed. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Next man.
Hello, my name is Beth Potts, and I am a citizen here. We actually have a vacation home in Cape and Bridge. And I would just like to say that our family travels up 50 often on the weekends to go there to stay. And we stop at Hall Creek to buy all of our needs, everything, on our way there. Sometimes it's late in the evening. It's the last door before you enter into West Virginia. And I'd just like you to know that our family appreciates their business, and it would be a shame to see them close.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Bear with me. Okay. Thank you for your time. A lot of people have already taken my, everything I was going to say. So I think what I would rather say is the benefit of the store, being a customer of it. I'm not a resident of...
Could you state your name, please, real quick?
Darren Durflinger.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm not from Frederick County. I'm Shandor County, but I spend almost all my time here, and I frequent the store quite often. And not just that location, he has two other locations in the area. And the consistency of which the store is always in, I mean, it's impeccable. And like I said, the reason why I stopped there, I don't stop in places that I don't like. She said Cape and Bridge. I go to Cape and Bridge quite a bit. I personally don't like the congestion when you get off 37. I just, there's places to go, but you get to Stretch, you get to go, you get up there, and you're treated like a king when you're in there. And like I said, it's consistent with those other locations. So I think, I can't, I don't have to live next to it, I understand that, but it looks like there's a lot of reasonable people here. It looks like they're working on it, and I just like, I think calmer heads can prevail in this whole thing. So there's a benefit there as well.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Real concise, real concise this time.
I just want to clarify a few things, if not for you guys, at least the citizens listening. We're not advocating that we're closing, but we are asking that the conditions that were within their control were the ones that we complained about that were being violated. And we feel that the recommendation that we made supports us, it supported the neighboring citizens, the CUP property owner and its customers. And as far as the Newcombs, I am thrilled that they have that light fixed. Had I not been pushing this whole issue, it would not have even gotten to that point, and they would continue to be living by a stadium. So I'm excited to see that the things that were done, that that wasn't the point of this hearing. It was about the conditions being violated. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions? But let me close the public hearing. This time, since no one else is coming forward, I'll close the public hearing. And I will like, the advocate would like to respond to any, what you have heard.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the opportunity. I don't have much of a response, except to thank those citizens who have come out tonight to speak in our favor. In response to Ms. Menefee, we did try to reach her. I left a message for her. I wanted to talk to her. I didn't receive a call back. We'll continue to reach out to her, and we'll continue to try to address any complaints that she might have in a prompt manner. And again, I'd just like to emphasize what one gentleman said, is that regretfully, we just don't have any control over the general noise on Route 50. We don't have any control over whether truckers put on their jake brakes or don't put on the jake brakes, or whether somebody is, the gentleman said earlier, whether somebody spins out leaving the site. We can ask them not to, I suppose, but we don't have any control over it. It is an area that appears to have grown, like all of Northern Virginia, even out here near the West Virginia line. It's an area that's grown, both in terms of people and traffic. With that comes needs, and with that comes vehicles and noise. And we can do what we can on our site, and we will continue to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please. Commissioners, questions? Mr. Oates?
I go back to the reasons for a revocation that's listed in the ordinance. One citation for a couple of violations that staff has worked through for the current owner, to me, does not meet repeated or continuing violations. I think the Board of Supervisors needs to, I guess, nail that down, exactly what are they looking for? What is considered repeated or continuing violations? Is it once a year, three in a five-year period? I think it's up to them to make that determination. Mr. Marson, if you'd let the Newcombs know, if they would contact John Bishop and ask that the Transportation Committee take a look and possibly get some signs from VDOT to put no jake brakes through that stretch, there's no hills, that's a possibility that might help that situation. But I just don't see the, I guess, the process for revocation. I don't think it meets the ordinance at this time.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions?
I just have a comment. I'm also a customer, I was at Mo and Grace's today. I'm also a customer, and I appreciate the fact, as do others, that they are there. I understand the concerns of other people, but they have done a lot, I've seen it myself, to correct it. So at this time, if there's no other discussion, I'm prepared to make a recommendation.
So entertain a motion?
And I'm going to, yes, a motion.
I'm going to take it slow because it's very critical for this business, as well as the neighbors. So, I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that the conditional use 1396 not be revoked at this time, but that the Board instruct county staff to monitor business location at 4780 Northwestern Pike for a minimum of 60 days to determine if they continue any violations of the CUP.
I have a motion. And clarify that one more time, how you read that. That motion was to not revoke.
Not.
Not revoke.
Not to revoke at this time. That's critical, too, at this time.
Not to revoke. Do I have a second?
Second.
Entertain a vote, then we'll go to the vote. Again, this vote is to not revoke. Yes would be a not to revoke. So, I'll start with Mr. Moan.
Moan, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Trumbull, yes.
Willmott, yes.
Oates, yes.
Klein, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Ambrogie, yes.
Marston, yes.
Hungry, yes.
The chair votes yes. This will go to the Board of Supervisors for their nine, September 12th, with a not to revoke vote. Thank you. Thank you for all that participated and spoke tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I have to abstain from the next item.
Thank you, sir. Our next item on our agenda is a conditional use permit. It's an action item, excuse me, it's an action item. It's a conditional use permit number 08-18 for Trailer Drop LLC submitted by Gray Wolf Inc. for our tractor truck and tractor truck trailer parking use as a conditional use in the M1 Light Industrial District. The property is located in Stonewall Industrial Park at the end of McGee Road, Route 861, Winchester, Virginia, and is identified with property identification number 43-19-64 in the Stonewall Magisterial District. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again. Members of the Commission, as you recall, this is an action item. This item was postponed for 45 days at your June 6 meeting to allow the applicant an opportunity to work with staff on additional conditions to address the construction of structures within the Route 37 right-of-way. This is a, the screen on your left, excuse me, again, this shows the property in light blue that we're, that's up front, on front of you tonight, and also shows you the right-of-way path of Route 37. This is a layout that the applicant also shown Route 37 for the parking here for this conditional use permit. Again, just to bring you up to speed. What was brought up at the last, your last meeting, when this was probably before you on June 6th, was concerns where the complaint identifies the Route 37 right-of-way and structures and how to get there. And basically, just to rehash again, you know, the goal of the area plan, which this is part of, initial road plan, is implementation of Route 37. The zoning ordinance addresses a CUP as a land use action, and as with any land use action, the goals of comprehensive policy plan should be implemented. Staff notes that the application does not provide for the acquisition of future Route At the assistance of the Planning Commission, staff had worked with the applicant to come up, and the conditions are actually bolded on the screen, and I believe in your agenda package, to address Route 37 right-of-way and structures within that right-of-way. And so, should the Planning Commission find this used to be appropriate, staff would recommend the following conditions be assigned to this conditional use permit. Number one, all review agency comments and requirements should be complied with at all times. Number two, the site plan for this property should be designed to accommodate a future Route 37 right-of-way. Those structures will be located in the Route 30, or the future Route 37 right-of-way. That was one of the things that was brought in, again, at the Planning Commission. The site shall meet the requirements of the Frederick County Zoning Ordinance, Section 165-204, TAC 24, which is tractor, truck, and truck trailer parking. That's the additional standards that we put on through the ordinance. And number four, which was added to the conditions, that at such time this property develops as a byright M1 light industrial use, this conditional use permit will be deemed null and void. And number five, of course, any expansion or change of use or acquire a new conditional use permit. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll answer any questions you or the commissioners may have on this conditional use permit 08-18. Thank you.
Any questions from the commissioners? No shake of head? Yep, we're good. Would the applicant like to speak, please? Thank you, sir.
I'm Tim Stowe with Stowe Engineering, representing the applicant. I would just say that the property owner has reviewed the conditions, is satisfied with those, and certainly willing to comply with those, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that there may be at this time. I'll be glad to sit down if there are none.
I just still have the same question, why we don't dedicate the 37 right-of-way now on this, but I think I'm barking up the wrong tree, but just go on record that I did say it again, so, thank you.
Yeah. CYA.
We're good. Thank you. Any, since this is not a public hearing, we've already had our public hearing on this item, if I'm correct, it's just an action item. Is there, if there's no questions, or any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Klein?
I'd like to move for adoption of conditional use permit 08-18 for Trailer Drop LLC.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Vote, Mr. Hunger.
Hunger, yes.
Marston, yes.
Ambrogie, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Klein, yes.
Willmott, yes.
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 Trumbull, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Moan, yes.
The chair votes yes. This will go to our Board of Supervisors on September 12th. It's been a long evening. It goes September 12th. That is our last item on our agenda. I will ask that, do we have a meeting in two weeks, Mr. Secretary? Or do we know?
This time, I'm probably going to wait here. I don't believe we have anything at this time.
Well, we'll wait to hear from our secretary. So, at that time, that ends our items on our agenda. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? All those in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you.